And you see who's coming this year, Drew Brees, a great man and a tremendous athlete. We have comedy, a world-class comedian, Carlos Oscar, and a wonderful individual. We have food for everyone who comes. So if you don't have a church to go to Easter Sunday, we invite you to join us. And what a blessing it is, we live in a country where we can talk like this freely. And we come to these chambers where it says, "In God we trust." So will you please join me in sharing the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please bow with me, if you would, as we pray. Father, thank you so much for this day, this sun-splash glorious day, the breeze walking onto these grounds, the beautiful fountains outside. I remember when it wasn't like that. But Lord, thank you for what you've done with this city of Oceanside. Thank you for the incredible buildings that are being erected daily now. Thank you for what you're doing to this city. And we ask your grace on all the proceedings that go on. We thank you for this time now, Lord, because it is decisions made in here that spills over to things we see in our community. So, Lord, we come today with thanks. If we're breathing, which we are, we're blessed. Thank you for your blessings, for the things you bring to us, for the things you keep from us. Thank you for your love and your protection, for your grace. And, Lord, in this hour, we ask your blessings on these who represent all of us. Please give them the mind and the wisdom of Solomon. Give them the strength of a David or Samson. And, Lord, give them the tenderness and the kindness that was exemplified from you, Lord, in Christ. Bless these meetings today. And we pray, Lord, that you continue to keep your hand on our city. And we pray, if anyone's looking for a place at Easter, may they find a good church, ours or there's many great ones in this community. So bless us now. Sit with us. We thank you together. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. At this time, I'd like to have the Meals on Wheels people come forward, please, for a representation. And a request from all of us out there.
Mr. Mayor, we had Meals on Wheels, and we want to thank you for giving us this opportunity tonight to come down and talk to this group and the entire Oceanside community. We really appreciate the time that you took, I think, two weeks ago, and Mayor Pro Tem Feller as well, and hand-delivered meals with our volunteer to six or seven households in senior households in Oceanside. And it was a very special and touching moment because many of the seniors that we serve are the only visitation from a Meals on Wheels representative, in this case, it was the kind mayor, is the only human contact they have that day. So it's a very special thing that you did, and we want to thank you for that.
And they were kind enough to let us come today and ask about volunteers. We currently have 60 seniors that we serve Meals on Wheels to in Oceanside. We have 40 on a wait list, and the reason they're on a wait list is because we don't have enough volunteers to do deliveries. So we're hoping that some of you may have time or have a friend or relative that has time. We only ask that you do deliveries twice a month, and it takes about two hours. And if you want to do more days than twice a month, you're certainly welcome to, but we ask for two days a month. Of those 40 seniors that we need to find a way to deliver to, that would be about three more routes that we'd have to create, and it takes about 10 volunteers per route. We currently have five routes in Oceanside. The time of the deliveries is from 9:00 a.m., or, excuse me, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. So that's the two-hour timeframe that you'd be delivering, and you'd have anywhere from 10 to 15 on your route. There's a training session at San Marcos, and that takes maybe an hour and a half. And there is a background check, and then you would go along as a ride-along with a current volunteer one time, just so you can see how everything's done. I've been delivering in Oceanside for 14 years, and I can tell you how rewarding it is. The seniors appreciate so much the food deliveries. We bring them birthday boxes on their birthday and a bouquet, and it's also a great safety check. If we get there and they don't answer the door, we don't get in the car and drive away. We call them if they don't answer. We call the office, and the office takes it up. But we always want to make sure that they're safe in their homes. So we hope that you would consider signing up. It's so rewarding. At the end of the day, you know that you've fed all these seniors and brightened their day a bit. A lot of times, they don't get birthday presents or cards anymore, and so they're very delighted when they get that. So it's really a wonderful experience and very gratifying to do. The phone number to call is 760-736-9900, and they will be thrilled to hear from you. I also have brochures here about being a volunteer. If anybody would like those now, I can just, when we finish, I can just raise your hand, and I'll come bring you one. But we hope that you'll consider it. It's, once you start, you can't stop. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So at this point, I'd like to invite the Green Oceanside team to come forward for a proclamation for North County Earth Month.
All right. Good evening. Honorable Mayor Weiss and council. Thank you for having us today. I'm really excited to announce, this is our 10th year of the Green Oceanside and Earth Festival campaign. So we're very excited to be here today. Several of my colleagues here, Mo and Teresa and colleagues in the audience, they were at our first Earth Festival 10 years ago, where we had approximately 200 people at downtown. Today, our Earth Festival, we're anticipating 10,000 people and visitors coming. So it's really exciting. I encourage everyone to join us for Earth Month 2019. There's several events throughout the month, great opportunities to make a statement and promote sustainability. And also, I encourage you all to take the mayor's pledge for water conservation and sustainability. Our mayor Weiss is doing it, so you can too. So please check out greenoceanside.org and visit us at the North County Earth Festival on April 22nd. And lastly, Green Oceanside is a campaign dedicated to environmental stewardship for our community. It's dedicated to watershed protection, zero waste, energy conservation, water conservation, and sustainability. Green Oceanside members are not just the team members up here and in the audience. Green Oceanside members are you and our community, our residents, as well as our hundreds of businesses that are dedicated to sustainability. So thank you for making the Green Oceanside campaign successful these past 10 years. So, thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, if I could have the Rotary members come up? I think there's one or two of you here.
Thank you. We're delighted to be here. We represent the three Rotary Clubs of Oceanside. We are celebrating 95 years here in Oceanside this month. We are very involved in the community. We support Oceanside High, El Camino, Lincoln Middle School. We're involved in Crown Heights. We represent the three presidents that are here, Dennis, Julie, and myself, and also our district governor, who is district governor for 61 clubs in our county. So we're very happy to be here. We are celebrating Rotarians at Work Day, and that will be in the last Saturday in April. We all have work projects that we are doing right here in this community. We're very pleased to be here, and we're very happy to receive a proclamation.
Does Dr. Jones want to say anything? All right. Well, thank you very much, and congratulations on everything that you do for our community and everything that you do support, and congratulations.
Wait, wait, we're going to do photo, real quick. Yes. If you can squish in a little bit. Okay, yeah. Sure. Ask for two.
Ask for two what, beers?
Mr. Mullin? Thank you. The City Council met in closed session at 3:30 to discuss the following items. Items two, three, and four. There was no meeting on item one. Item two, public employee performance evaluation, city manager, city attorney. Item three, conference with real estate negotiator involving the 7.3-acre vacant parcel of land near Pala Road and Los Arbolitos Boulevard, negotiating parties City of Oceanside and Concordia Homes. Under negotiations are price and terms for the potential sale of the property. There is direction provided, but no reportable action under the Brown Act on item three. Item four, conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation in the matter of one case involving a claim filed by a contractor on the Jones Road product, Schilling Paradise Corporation. There is no action on item four, and there was no action on item two to report either. But I believe the clerk will announce that item eight from your consent agenda has been pulled by staff and will be re-agendized in the future.
And with that, we'll go to the consent calendar, which does not include item eight because it's been removed from the agenda. So if we have a motion for the balance?
Move approval.
And I'd just like a comment on 15, please. Second.
Do you want to make the comment before we vote, or?
No, I, well, I don't think I can. I want council or staff to respond to a couple, just a quick.
But please vote on the balance with the exception of 15.
Motion approved, 5-0.
15?
On 15, we're using this grant money to kind of spruce up the mouth of the lagoon more or less west of Coast Highway. But I asked staff if they could look at how we can improve the drainage above, all the way out as far as Rancho Del Oro through our detention basins. And because, seriously, Wieland Doors had $1.5 million in damage in December and then another flood on industry. So I'm just saying that we need to do something up the creek to help with the flow. So if I might ask staff to just comment on how we could move forward with fixing that.
Sure. Honorable Mayor and council members, Carrie Dale, Water Utilities Director. Although the current study before you does do planning for habitat restoration and encourages recreation and community access to the coast, it does do some flood protection in the lower areas of the Loma Alta Creek. I'm going to ask Brian Thomas to also comment on some of the things in the upper area that might assist with that.
Thank you, Carrie. Honorable Mayor and City Council members, Brian Thomas, the city engineer. With respect to the upper portion of it, we have two detention basins already constructed for flood control facilities. The Rancho Del Oro Flood Basin has been designed, but at this point, we do not have funds currently programmed in this year to make the improvements. And currently, we anticipate roughly $3 million to make the basin improvements, but that is exclusive of a roughly $1.5 million need to relocate a sewer line that is within the area of the flood basin.
So my question is, what would be the appropriate way to go forward to try to get this in our improvement package?
Honorable Mayor and council members, Deputy Mayor Feller, we, I would suggest possibly making a comment when we do bring forward the budget and the capital improvement program. We do have a workshop next week, so it is still in draft form, and you do have ability to make changes and direction to staff at that time.
Okay. So as far as item 15, then I'll just move approval now, and we'll talk next week.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
If we can, go to item 25 with Mr. Shafon.
Here we go. Perfect.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Weiss and City Council members. I am Ted Shafon, Harbor Division Manager. Tonight, I'm presenting the replacement of J dock at Oceanside Harbor. Staff recommends that the Harbor Board approve and amended and restated design-build-public works agreement in the amount not to exceed $3.12 million with Bellingham Marine Industries of Bellingham, Washington for the design permitting and replacement of J dock at the Oceanside Harbor and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. As a reference, J dock is in the northwest corner, as depicted on the map indicated by the arrow. Oceanside Harbor was built in 1963, and 20 years later, J dock was the first dock to be replaced and is the oldest dock at Oceanside Harbor. In 2016, Moffett Nickel identified J dock as needing replacement in the near future. And then, most recently, Anchor QEA, another engineering firm, confirmed to the harbor that J dock must be replaced. Bellingham, excuse me, Bellingham Marine has been selected to design, build, and install. Since 1983, all of the harbor docks have been designed and built by Bellingham. Harbor maintains parts and equipment in-house and the technology to do the maintenance on the Bellingham docks. Once approved, the project is going to take at least nine to 12 months for permitting. Fabrication and mobilization of the docks to Oceanside Harbor will take another three to four months. Phase one construction would begin in October 2020, which would take about three months. And then, phase two would begin in January of 2021 and also take approximately three As indicated, the total costs for the projects are expected to be at $3.12 million. Thank you. I'm available for any questions you might have.
Is there any public?
No public.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. Did the Harbor and Beaches Advisory Committee basically approve this? I see that they were going to be advised, but this has been going on for a while. So did they, were they generally in agreement?
They have been advised of it many times over the past several years, even prior to my starting at the harbor. So yes.
And they were in general agreement?
Yes.
Okay. Move approval.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Through our tour, I was able to walk on that dock, and it definitely needs to be replaced. I'm looking forward to seeing that, and thank you for bringing this forward.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. We'll do item 26. On Measure X and the Aquatic Center, Ms. Larson?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, Deanna Larson, Assistant City Manager. The item before you would adopt an ordinance to exclude public projects funded with Measure X, as well as funding for the Aquatic Center at El Corazon from the debt limit ordinance that was adopted in 1984. That was 35 years ago, when the city council approved an ordinance to require voter approval of bonds issued for capital improvement projects or real property acquisitions funded by the unrestricted general fund above a specified dollar amount. Additionally, the ordinance exempted projects funded by state and federal grants, special assessments, community development block grant, the Harbor District, and the Community Development Commission from the provisions of the ordinance. The 1984 ordinance was narrowly approved on a 3-2 vote and was purposely uncodified. The ordinance was prompted by economic uncertainty following recent state voter actions back in the early, late '70s, early '80s, including Proposition 13 and the GAN initiative, and a desire to have an extra level of financial responsibility. In 1988, the council adopted an ordinance to require that the city treasurer update the debt limit annually, and the current debt limit is approximately $8.4 million. And since 1984, a lot has changed in 35 years. There have been numerous propositions approved by the state voters, as well as legislative actions in Sacramento that have imposed additional requirements on local control and have more clearly defined when voter approval is required. Additionally, the city has adopted conservative financial practices and well-defined budget, fiscal, and debt policies. The city's debt per capita in 2018 was $518, as compared to $886 back in 1984, and that's in constant dollars. On an inflation-adjusted basis, the 1984 debt would have been approximately $2,100 per capita, and today, we just have $518 per capita in debt. The city's voters did approve Measure X in November 2018 with the intent to improve infrastructure, and some anticipated Measure X projects, such as the Fire Station One replacement and the concrete portion of the pier, may require internal debt borrowing that would exceed the debt limit. Since Measure X is already voter-approved and has additional oversight from the Citizens' Oversight Committee, staff recommends that projects funded with Measure X be exempted from the 1984 ordinance. Additionally, the city has been advancing the El Corazon Aquatic Center project for a number of years and has discussed this project at multiple city council meetings. The most recent council direction has been to fund construction of the Aquatic Center with a bond issue using the stream of revenue that will be freed up when the Civic Center bonds are paid off in late 2019, thus not increasing the city's debt limit. On that basis, staff is recommending that the city council introduce an ordinance to exclude public projects funded by Measure X, as well as funding for the Aquatic Center at El Corazon from the debt limit ordinance. I'll be available for any questions.
We have one speaker, Jimmy Knott.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, 127 Sherri Lane. After reading this at home two or three times, and then sitting here and rereading it two or three times, and the exact, also, ordinance two or three times, I tried to change my mind, but I can't. Measure X has specific wording. I advise to take and remove the Aquatic Center from any linkage to this ordinance. I have no problem with Measure X on this ordinance. No problem at all. The voters passed it. But Measure X does not include things like the Aquatic Center. That has to be considered separately. You're having a budget workshop next week. I would advise, at that time, considering the workshop, at that time, the Aquatic Center and the funding for it, then coming back with a separate ordinance for it. Because the mere appearance of it into this ordinance provides a semblance of linkage. And if it continues, long with it, some lawyer in the future will take this and say, "Look, it's linked." And you know, and I know, lawyers love this. I would take and just look at this very seriously and think about it and separate the two. Thank you.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Mr. Mayor, we have a late speaker, if you wish to hear it.
Last one?
Nick Ritchie? Of course.
Good evening. Nick Ritchie, 133 Sherri Lane. I, too, just as Jimmy spoke about, in looking at this last night and a week before, I really couldn't quite wrap my head around it. But after hearing the assistant city manager speak, it became quite clear that I just don't agree. First of all, I would hope that the El Corazon, as much as we've had so many people coming here and speaking about what a positive contribution it will make, I believe, just as Jack Feller said many months ago, how are we even going to pay for maintenance? A million dollars in maintenance? And we're talking about taking Measure X funds? That, to me, is stunning, that it's even mentioned in the same sentence as Measure X, to spend any money on this whatsoever. And to go into debt again at the end of 2019 over perhaps El Corazon, that, to me, once again, is absolutely stunning. We have so many other needs in this city with infrastructure that need to be addressed and need to be addressed quickly. Thank you very much.
Ms. Larson, I just want to clarify, there is no Measure X money being allocated to the Aquatic Center.
That is correct.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you very much. And in response to the two speakers, this ordinance actually addresses both the Measure X and also bonding for the Aquatic Center. It's two different things. And that is an appropriate thing for us to do. The city attorney has indicated. So what I want to say is, I actually would have preferred that we eliminate this, since it's outdated. However, this is the same thing, basically, and I think that's the way it was presented in the staff report, that we already have checks and balances. The city has very conservative financial practices already installed. I supported Measure X, was one of a handful on the council that did, went out there actively. And I also support the Aquatic Center, have actually insisted that Measure X funds have not be used. So I'm going to go ahead and move introduction. I think that the faster that we get our projects done, I think the happier our residents will be. Thank you.
Member Keim?
Yeah, I think it's important to differentiate between the two. Measure X is for public safety, critical infrastructure. We've done that. We've
We have so many other needs in this city with infrastructure that need to be addressed and need to be addressed quickly. Thank you very much.
Ms. Larson, I just want to clarify, there is no Measure X money being allocated to the Aquatic Center.
That is correct.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you very much. And in response to the two speakers, this ordinance actually addresses both the Measure X and also bonding for the Aquatic Center. It's two different things, so, and that is an appropriate thing for us to do. The city attorney has indicated. So what I want to say is, I actually would have preferred that we eliminate this since it's outdated. However, this is the same thing, basically, and I think that's the way it was presented in the staff report, that we already have checks and balances. The city has very conservative financial practices already installed. I support, supported Measure X, was one of a handful on the council that did, went out there actively, and I also support the Aquatic Center, have actually insisted that it not, that Measure X funds have not be used. So I'm going to go ahead and move introduction. I think that the faster that we get our projects done, I think the happier our residents will be. Thank you.
Member Keim?
Yeah, I, I think it's important to differentiate between the two. Measure X is for public safety, critical infrastructure. We've done that, we've made sure the pool is separate from Measure X, and it's going to be important as we go forward with the Citizens Oversight Committee, we're going to ensure that Measure X is used for what the voters voted for, and I think that's important.
Councilmember Feller?
Thank you. I, I don't recall, was this building bonded for?
Yes.
And this is probably, at the time, more than the pool, but, and, and that ordinance was still in place at that point. So I, I think it makes a, a lot of sense to just continue down that path. This has nothing to do with Measure X dollars. The, the pool actually paying for itself is, it's out there. They, they have so many activities for these things that, down in Carlsbad, their Agua Del Norte, or whatever the name of that park is, I don't go to Carlsbad, so.
Is that a second?
A second? Okay, I'll second.
Is there a second? Please vote.
This is the introduction of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, amending Chapter Two, Article Nine, Division Two, by the addition of Section 2.52 regarding the expenditure of Measure X sales tax proceeds and funds for the construction of an Aquatic Center at El Corazon.
Please vote.
Motion approved, five zero.
For the time being, we're going to have to skip twenty-seven, so we will go to thirty-three, Communications, on items not on the agenda. Do you have any speakers?
Four speakers. Our first speaker is Marty Acevedo, to be followed by Becky Johnson.
My name is Marty Acevedo. I reside at three-six-five-nine Azar Lotto Drive in Oceanside. I'm an executive member of, a board member of the Parkinson's Association of San Diego and an advocate, ambassador for the Davis Finney Foundation for Parkinson's. On behalf of those two organizations, I wish to extend my deepest gratitude to the mayor and the city council for your proclamation that declared April as Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month in the City of Oceanside. Your proclamation was prominently displayed at our walk last Sunday. There were eleven hundred participants who exhibited courage, determination, strength, and inspiration along their journey. Parkinson's disease is a progressive neurodegenerative disease, known as a disease of accelerated aging and often only identified as, "Oh yeah, grandma's got a shaky hand." In fact, it's really a multitude of motor and non-motor symptoms that profoundly impact quality of life. No two people with Parkinson's have the same exact disease or progression. In fact, if you've met one person with Parkinson's, you've met one person with Parkinson's. The incidence of PD is expected to double by the year 2040. While there currently is no cure, our community is encouraged and hopeful that very soon we will benefit from therapies and medications that allow for better management of our symptoms and treatments for the causes of PD. As a person with Parkinson's, my personal message to our community is that they join me as, as in pleasing to live their life well with Parkinson's. Exercise, educate yourself, find a movement disorder specialist to best manage your symptoms and disease. Did I say exercise? Stay positive, live your best life. Thank you, Mayor Weiss, Deputy Mayor Feller, Councilmember Rodriguez, Councilmember Sanchez, and Councilmember Keim for your support. It means a great deal to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Becky Johnson, to be followed by Nick Ritchie.
Good evening, my name is Becky Johnson. I'm a parent and community member, and I'd like to address the issue of the, of how marijuana is quickly approaching Oceanside. Oceanside needs to know who all are behind the unpermitted pot shops, because they are likely the same people who are now applying for marijuana business licenses for permitted pot shops, grows, and factories. I am also not sure if Oceanside has regulation language that disqualifies unpermitted marijuana business owners from holding marijuana business licenses. In Oceanside, if not, they should. Please consider the points from the attached handout right here, the OC Register of three-fifteen-nineteen, legal, illegal, some players still work both sides of the state marijuana industry. When local authorities do manage to shut down an unpermitted shop, grower, or manufacturer, they often don't have the resources or hard evidence needed to nail all the people behind the operation. Unpermitted shops are owned by people who also have stakes in legal stores, with the owners using a complex scheme of limited partnerships, LLCs, and proxy owners to hide their dual roles. The State of California requires identification of all those with ten percent investment in business to be identified, and so should Oceanside, so that our neighborhoods can know who is coming in. Unpermitted shops are promoted side-by-side with legal operators on the online directory weed maps. More than a dozen sources who spoke to the Southern California News Group, on and off the record, over the course of several months, say the blurring of legal and eagle worlds in the cannabis industry, most widely known yet difficult to prove secret. In conclusion, I'd also like to mention that pot manufacturers and distributors are diverting products that didn't pass strict state testing requirements to unpermitted shops. This is detrimental to the public health and safety of our citizens. Thank you.
Next speaker is Nick Ritchie, to be followed by Tim Broom.
Good evening, Nick Ritchie, one-three-three, Sherri Lane. This is concerning the review of Brother Benno's conditional use permit. And I was just wondering, it started in November and now we're here in the middle of April. I understand that there's some pretty vigorous interactions going on, and I would hope that it would have come to a conclusion quickly. Currently, Brother Benno's conditional use permit is being reviewed. All nonprofits in our city operate within the conditions that the city requires of them. While Brother Benno's five recovery homes and food program for the working poor are a success, it's the small group of clients, the unwilling but able, as Sergeant Ridenhour calls them, the will-nots, that get services, food, shower, mail service, with no accountability, no requirement, no expectation of them consistently working a program toward their own wellness. The giving away of food and services has failed to bring a significant number of transients to wellness. They get what they need, return to the riverbed, which has had a hundred and five fires in the last three months, according to the chief, panhandle, hangout, or whatever. It should be evident that if we allow any homeless nonprofit to exist in our city, they should demonstrate no harm to the citizens of Oceanside, and that their program should be bringing wellness to the people they claim to be bringing wellness to. Given the effects and restraints of Proposition forty-seven, fifty-seven, AB one-oh-nine, and Martin versus Boise, you know that the tools to deal with those who choose a different lifestyle at the expense of those around them are few. With twenty years of operation in the City of Oceanside, Brother Benno's has no data that demonstrates the effectiveness of the help they daily give out, none. It doesn't exist. In fact, they may be doing more harm than good, enabling transients to remain in their, their lifestyle. As a requirement to receive their CUP, I urge you to require Brother Benno's to provide evidence of their transient client's progress to wellness. A defiant path of homelessness, out of homelessness, to create accountability as a condition of the CUP is one of the few, few tools the city has. Feel-good anecdotes in no way justify the existence of any homeless nonprofit. If their clients choose to not participate in their own wellness, services should be required to be terminated. We want people well, not just serviced. And also, I bring your attention to the quarterly magazine of The Chamber, I hope that you've gotten this, they put together a really good magazine as a result of, I mean, an article put together as a summary of a presentation by the hot team. It's excellent. So I hope that you'll get a chance to read it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Tim Broom.
That'll come up. Honorable counsel, my name is Tim Broom, and I reside in the East Side neighborhood here in Oceanside. On February twenty-eighth of this year, I submitted a complaint to the airport regarding the parachute operator Go-Jump flying over the East Side neighborhood at an altitude of five hundred feet. The plane flew over Laurel Elementary School at that low altitude regarding that aircraft data, and this is illegal according to the FAA. I requested a follow-up in that email. I have heard nothing to date from either the city or the airport. On April eighth of this year, I sent a follow-up email to our Michelle Lawrence, our city manager, requesting a follow-up to that complaint also. Again, I've heard nothing. And here's a copy of that. That's what it looks like. Here I am in person to present it to you, present the complaint to you, which you are ignoring. The Go-Jump company which you permit to operate from the airport has had other complaints from residents, most notably items falling from parachutists into the backyards of residents. Other residents in the East Side have taken to putting up banners on rooftops, telling airport users to fly elsewhere. Previously and within the boundary of City Code Section three-B dot six, we had responses from the airport manager. His assistant, Jared Foddy, however, has taken a different approach to residents with his interpretation of FAA rules and the method to responding or ignoring to complaints from local residents. We are under the impression that this is a breach of the contract between the airport management company and the city. His current approach to responding to complaints regarding safety and noise issues is to shoo them off by using rule quotations as if, and if it is an email complaint such as mine, flood your email boxes with replies from his iPhone that are meaningless in an effort to further diffuse the original complaint. Madam City Manager, if it is your goal to ignore us in hopes that we will go away, you are sorely mistaken. It appears that this company that allegedly runs the airport doesn't really report to anyone at the city. Often residents of the East- Hi, Esther. Hi, I'm speaking, thanks. The often residents of the East Side feel as though they're living in an episode of the Twilight Zone, where a completely inept government just merrily hums along, ignoring life-threatening incompetence and greed from two companies that run outside the city, and airport users who fly haphazardly, showing indifference to property owners just feet below. If you and the airport contractor wish to continue on this track with ignoring valid written complaints, then our response to you will be to file them publicly. Thank you.
We have one late speaker slip. Kenneth Quinn?
I don't ever see any of you all out walking the street, the strand where I play my drums behind the pan shelf, and I don't understand how it is that you govern the city, that you know nothing about what's going on really out in the street. The gentleman behind me spoke to me about Brother Benno's. Obviously, he doesn't live in the street. He thinks that he has a solution or wants you to have one. I would request that when I'm playing drums down on the street, behind the pan shelf, that come out and see what it is that you're governing. You're digging a two, you're digging a two-story hole and blocking my view of the palm trees and drawing a bunch of more rich people that are going to look down their nose at me. I truly don't appreciate it. I don't hang out with any of these people out here on the street. I stay to myself. But, and I have a rapport with the police department. They know that I'm not a troublemaker. I just make a lot of noise at five o'clock in the afternoon when everybody's coming off the beach. But, as I've said before, there needs to be a solution to a situation instead of shoving something around. And the homeless people in this community need to have a perspective of the neighborhood in which they live in. I do. There's garbage cans everywhere. If I have garbage, I throw it away. I'm here to entertain the community and make an honest dollar, and I don't know what else to say. That's about it. Just don't look down your nose at me, because you make more money than I do, and my credit sucks, and I can't afford $10,000 to move it into an eight-hundred-foot box. So, Mr. Mayor, I have a question for you, sir. Do you play guitar?
Yes.
I would like to invite you maybe on one day. I play on the beats, I skipped today so I could be here at the city council meeting, but I play on the beats starting at four o'clock behind the pan shelf. If you would like, sir, I would be very interested in listening to the music that you like to play. I follow behind. It sure would be cool for a person sleeping in a parking lot behind a grocery store to play music with the mayor. That would, that would be like another notch on my resume. That'd be cool. Because I, I just played a benefit at the Golden Cafe to bring a local shower, mobile shower to the Oceanside. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
There's no more speakers.
We'll go back to twenty-seven with Ms. Pierce.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Marjorie Pierce, Housing and Neighborhood Services Director. Staff is recommending that the city council approve a loan agreement in the amount of not to exceed $1.712 million and a regulatory agreement with various states LLC for the construction of a residential care facility. What is being proposed tonight is a ninety-four unit assisted living development for seniors at Dixie, on Dixie Street. Of those ninety-four units, the $1.7 million with eight project-based Section Eight vouchers would get us eight affordable units for seniors to live in assisted living. This project is being proposed as an alternative, which had been proposed earlier to the Planning Commission, as a residential skilled nursing facility. And at that commission meeting, there was some objections by some of the commissioners that, one, there was, there was a loss of opportunity to create some affordable housing. They were concerned about some of the commercial aspects of that project, which included a pharmacy, and they were concerned about noise that would be generated from emergency vehicles. Subsequently, I met with the developer and have addressed all of the issues, or at least those issues that were raised by the Planning Commission, that we are getting eight affordable units. The commercial aspect of the pharmacy will no longer be there, and these are assisted units versus skilled living units. So Section Eight vouchers are eligible to use in assisted living, they're not allowed in skilled living. So the, one thing I do want to point out is the reason that we're only getting eight units is because that's the maximum number of units that HUD will allow under the Section Eight voucher program without kicking in Davis Bacon prevailing wages, which would essentially make the project financially unfeasible. So that's the maximum that we can get under the Section Eight voucher rules. What we're recommending is that this is a loan at three percent interest and that that interest begin accumulating in year five and that payments start after five years of operating. So the loan would be completely paid off in twenty-five years. Kaiser Marsden and Associates did an analysis of this project from financial analysis and determined that the $1.712 million was necessary to make this financially work for the eight units, and the Housing Commission recommended that the city council approve the project at its February twenty-sixth meeting. And with that, the developer is here to give a brief presentation on the project itself so that you can see it a little bit from his perspective.
Hi. So this is pretty exciting for me to be here with you all tonight. We've actually owned the land since, I think, 2005, and we, at one time, got it approved-
And what I think we have now is much better than any of the things we've come with before, with the assisted living for seniors and the affordable housing. Some things I'd like to point out that are unique about this project is how it addresses loneliness for our elders. So, the project is designed in a family-type model, so we have households of 10 to 12 people each. And for every 10 to 12 people, there's a kitchen, family room, dining room, and it's family style rather than the institutional style. It's also important to us that we're in a more residential-type neighborhood and we designed the homes to look like houses. We even put garages on them so that it blends in. And we're also very excited about the affordable aspect of it. When we did our gap analysis, the gap was actually significantly larger than what the city is contributing. It's actually more than double. So, as a developer, we're actually subsidizing the low-income housing as well as the city.
Thank you very much.
I'm no good with this PowerPoint. Okay, so, yeah, this is good. So, the text obviously isn't showing up, but this talks about how the affordable units are intermixed with all of the other units so that there'll be no distinction between the people that are paying market rate and the people that are there receiving the benefit from the city, the affordable housing. And we do this for a few reasons. One, we don't want those people to be stigmatized. We don't think it's necessary for anyone to know how much anyone else is paying or not paying. So, this contributes to their well-being and their happiness. This right here, the top picture, shows the street scene from Dixie Street. The bottom row shows the street scene from Grace. And the middle one is an angle shot at the entryway. So, as you can see, they look more like houses than a motel. If you look at most assisted living, you look at them, they look like motels, three-story buildings surrounded by parking spaces. It's kind of commercial-looking. These are much more friendly. This is the site plan, so we've actually put in four homes. And each home is two stories and each level of a home is basically a household. So, each level has 10 to 12 residents and they live like a family. They have access to the kitchen, they can go get an apple, they can get a drink of water. They don't have to get on an elevator if they want an apple and go down to a cafeteria or whatnot. In addition, we have leased or negotiated a lease with the church next door for additional parking. Parking was a big issue for the neighborhood. They were very concerned about it. And even with our previous submittal, we had 20% more parking than the ordinance called for the city requested even more. So, now we have almost double the parking that's required by ordinance. If we had a wholesale shift change, for example, eight o'clock in the morning, if everybody on the night shift was there and the whole day shift came, we could park two shifts and still have parking available for guests. So, this should not put any parking demand on the streets. These are interior shots from perspectives that just show the kind of the look of the buildings and the sight from the inside. This shows a view from the corner of Grace and Dixie and then just another perspective on the entry. Something else I want to point out that I think's kind of important is right now, on this corner, you know, obviously it's vacant, but there are no sidewalks. And people from the apartments in the neighborhood, they fill that street with cars. There's always cars lined up both sides of that street. And obviously, that's part of the reason the neighbors were concerned about it. But for me, this is a safety issue because you see people walking in the road all the time, people with strollers, people with children, and the cars are going by and it's not very safe. So, having the park strip, having the sidewalks come in, and we're also adding multiple streetlights is gonna make it a much more walkable and safe neighborhood. This is another perspective from the top. You can see the solar panels. The homes are designed to be very energy-efficient. We even have areas for people to grow fruit, or not fruit, but vegetables outside. We think this will add to people's sense of happiness and well-being if they can interact with the plants and their food. That's it, short and sweet, so.
So, what I wanted to add is that these units, when we talk about assisted living, they include all of the meals being prepared for the residents in the units. They're essentially studio apartments that the residents will live in with shared common facilities. One of the really neat things about this project is that the folks that reside in the low-income units will never, ever be displaced because they no longer can afford to live there. The market-rate units for assisted living are around, excuse me, $5,000 a month. And with the Section 8 vouchers, the tenants that will live in the assisted units will be paying approximately $1,000 a month with everything included. That includes also laundry service, housekeeping, and if they need assistance, for example, with getting their medications, that would also be included. So, it's a project that's the first of its kind in San Diego County and probably beyond. It is a new philosophy. It's taking assisted living and really making it more family-friendly and non-institutional which most assisted livings have that institutional feeling and this is much more a family-friendly, socially beneficial to the residents that will live there for a perspective of living longer and enjoying that independence as long as possible.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, by the way. Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, I was at the housing commission meeting when this was being proposed and I had some questions then, but I wanted to wait till this came before council. So, staff originally supported the skilled nursing facility.
Yes.
Then it came before planning commission and they were concerned about loss of affordable housing, noise, those sort of dynamics. So, you went back, came back with an updated plan. So, there's eight total rooms that will be under the care of housing and we'll collect vouchers through HUD. HUD will pay us, or pay you. So, who collects the rent? Is the developer will collect $1,000 just like a normal owner?
Yes.
HUD will pay those vouchers? Okay. So, it's about 23, 22, 23 units per building roughly. We're using about 31% of our inclusionary housing money. And so, what other projects would inclusionary, this fund, cover besides an assisted living? Like, what other, can you give me an example of another project that we've done in the past where these funds were used?
Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez. Yes, I can. Just to update you, we now have a little over $7 million in the inclusionary housing fund, which is the actual amount we've been collecting. We did, some inclusionary housing was used for the Mission Cove project. Inclusionary housing, I believe, was used for...
La Misyon.
Thank you. And also, I believe, Mission Grove.
Got it. And was it used in this format where the city is giving a loan to a developer?
Yes.
Okay. And are we doing similar terms to other developments?
Each development is different. So, this is the first of its kind and we want to make sure that there's a time to lease up. And also, we know that the developer is going to be subsidizing this project, so it's a little bit different. Some of the projects that we have done in the past, usually, our loans are based on residual receipts. So, it's not a straight where you're paying a monthly amount of money back like a normal loan would be. We've done one project like that. But, the others are based on residual receipts where we share the city with the developer, the profits.
Got it. I'm quite familiar with memory care facilities and senior assisted living and they're extremely successful. So, I think once you get it up and running and you apply for HUD financing, I think they're gonna say, yeah, you know, let's make this happen. What are your goals as far as, or what have you done to obtain alternative financing on this project?
Well, I can share, I can share a few things. I can tell you what our long-range plan is. And obviously, you know, rents can change, vacancy can change, interest rates can change. So, we don't know what's gonna happen in the future. But, it's anticipated by us that within five years of opening that we will refinance with a HUD loan and more than likely HUD will pay the city back. And I don't know if you're familiar with the HUD 232 healthcare loans, but they're very advantageous loans. They're 35-year fixed, non-recourse. But HUD doesn't allow other seconds. They don't allow other debt on the property. They want to be the sole lien holder. With the loan with Marjorie, it's a loan. It's a loan. It's not residual seats. It's not like, oh, we pay you when and if we have money. No, we have to pay. And more than likely, it will get paid off. The way our loan agreement is drafted is if there's not enough equity to do that, then we can modify the loan to work with HUD. There's a mechanism to do that. For the construction and development, we're gonna use conventional financing. And for opening, we'll use conventional financing to get...
So, you're gonna get this 1.7 right out the gate? If the city, if everything goes through planning commission, we approve it, everything is done, the 1.7's gonna go and that's gonna help as, in essence, your down payment to help get it going with, you're gonna get maybe a second? Are we gonna be in first position, I'm assuming?
So, we'll be in first position, but most of the money will be used to pay for the submitting of all of the applications and processing through the planning department. So, most of this is pre-development loan. That'll be basically journal entries that'll pay for like the permits and everything and to development services.
Okay.
And architectural and other studies that'll be required.
So, this loan will be issued before it gets through planning and the planning commission?
This will start the process for their submittal so that it'll then go through the planning commission, yes.
And then what if the planning commission denies it?
The planning commission were to deny the project, then our loan is still secured and we would get it paid back to us.
So, it's secured on a vacant lot?
Correct. There'll be a deed of trust recorded.
And what's the appraised value of this lot?
We haven't appraised it for a long time, but we paid 1.2 million in 2005 for the land, if that helps.
Okay.
Do you remember what the appraise?
I don't see the KMA associates' financial analysis in our packet to review.
KMA estimated the value at north of $4 million in their analysis.
Right, like a 45% debt-to-value ratio?
So, for our financing package, we're looking at roughly a $20 to $21 million cost. We're putting in $5.3 million equity. The city's 1.7 brings, as far as our construction lender's concerned, brings equity up to $7 million. We'd be getting a $14 million loan.
Last couple of questions. So, the five-year, it's deferred payments, right? And then you start making payments on year five. Hopefully, you'll secure funding by year five with HUD.
Yes.
Then at that refinance, the city would be paid that, those five-year worth of interest as a lump sum, correct?
That's what I expect to happen, yes.
Got it. How did you come to the 3% number?
That was just a 3% interest. It's kind of what we see in the industry a lot and so that's what we proposed.
Are you comfortable with the 94, 94 a month payment starting in year five?
Yes.
Okay. Well, what I would like to propose is just to put healthy pressure on the developer, I would like to propose doubling that interest rate to 6%, but it to be interest-only and that monthly payment would actually go down. And that way, you're paying the same, you're paying the same amount a month starting in year five, but it's gonna put healthy pressure on you to get out of this interest-only loan and into your own financing. Oh, sorry.
I'm actually okay with that.
Okay. Wonderful. I would like to...
Like 3% better, but interest-only, it's the cash flow we watch for very close.
Correct, yeah. So, I would like to make a motion to move forward on approving this and for the terms of the loan to be at 6% interest-only payment starting in year five.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. First of all, this is unusual and thank you very much for explaining that this is the first of its kind because I definitely don't want to, this was not noticed as a public hearing, this is a general item and therefore, the actual project is not before us. It's still being reviewed by the planning commission. So, thank you for, you know, a general kind of presentation, but, you know, I'm not really sure. I was kind of reaching out to the community to see, well, what do you guys think about this? Not understanding how this came, was coming before us before the actual project. So, pretty much what I'm hearing is that, what, in other words, all that's before us is this loan. The project itself is not before us. So, anything we say here should not prejudice at all the decision-makers at the planning commission level. This is more prep and that's how it should be presented. So, I, of course, would like to see more of these units. It sounds very innovative and it sounds pretty exciting. So, I'm gonna go ahead and move approval. Again, I don't want, you know, I'm excited about the units, the assisted living units. I don't really wanna, you know, say anything more about the project because I really want to let the planning commissioners look at this and it's gonna be, the community's gonna be told about it, they're gonna be noticed, and then the same thing here, they will be, this will come back to us as a public hearing with a lot of notice to the community. I'm sure you've reached out to them. Looks like you have a couple of people here that are, seem to be very supportive. So, I am gonna go ahead and move approval.
We already had a motion. Do you want to second his motion? Councilmember Rodriguez made a motion to approve.
Oh, okay.
I actually don't think that 6% is, you know, I'm fine with 3.
Then I'll second that motion. Councilmember Feller?
How many employees do you have on your staff at any one time? In other words, I'm looking at the layout. Looks like you have at least one per floor.
Yes. So, total employment, we expect to be around 80. And we always have at least one person in each household. So, each building, like the night shift, there may only be one person per house. But they'll fluctuate between one and three per house. So, you know, when meals are being prepared and cleaned up, obviously, there's more. Middle of the night, you know, less.
The, probably the most important thing that, I'm not too far from getting there, I don't think, but can they have their own TVs?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanna make sure I can get the golf channel.
You gotta watch MBL.
Councilmember Feller, they're individual studio apartments.
So, we have a motion in a second. I just want to clarify that the changes to the agreement will be made and it does not have to come back to us.
No, if that's, you know, if that's agreeable to the council, we'll just go ahead and those changes were pretty clear for the record. They've been accepted by the developer, so we'll go ahead and make those corresponding changes.
Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. And since it's after 6 o'clock, we'll go to item 31, our public hearing item on the solid waste rates. She told me she's gonna be about two minutes.
You think so?
Colleen said she's gonna be two minutes.
Got it.
In fact, she said she can skip the power... In fact, she said she can skip the PowerPoint.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Colleen Foster, Environmental Officer with the Water Utilities Department. I need to get the baby to bed, so I'll be quick, Mayor Weiss. Thank you. Staff in the Utilities Commission is recommending that the City Council approve the franchise provider's annual request for Consumer Price Index adjustment to contractor compensation under the city's solid waste service contract with Waste Management of California, and to adopt a resolution establishing solid waste user rates and direct staff to implement the user rates and franchise provider charges. The city contracts with Waste Management of California to provide solid waste and recycling services to both residential and commercial customers. This contract was approved by City Council in October of 2010. The contract ends in December of 2023. The contract specifies that a portion of the billing rate is to be paid to Waste Management for the provision of services, and another portion of the rate is to be paid to the city for the administration, billing, and other programming. The current contract provides Waste Management the opportunity to request an annual rate adjustment based upon the Consumer Price Index, and this rate adjustment, if approved by council, would be effective each July 1st. Waste Management is also currently requesting an administrative correction to the rate sheet to reinstate a bin exchange rate. To be clear, the bin exchange rate being fixed would only be applied after a customer has utilized one free bin exchange. The CPI calculation allowed per the contract is based on either 100% of the difference between previous years and this year's national all-city CPI, or 75% of the difference in this year's and the previous year's San Diego CPI, whichever is higher. Staff has verified that the effective increase is 2.53%, which is based upon the San Diego CPI average calculation. The CPI increase will result in approximately $488,000 in additional revenues and a projected $474,000 in additional expenses for the solid waste administration budget. Both of these items were anticipated in the 2019-2020 fiscal year budget for solid waste and recycling administration. The 2.53% increase represents a $0.44 a month increase to residential customers, or $5.28 a year. This concludes our presentation. Staff in the Utilities Commission is recommending approval of the franchise provider's annual request for adjustment. Thank you. I'll be at the dais for questions.
Before we go further, we need to do disclosures.
Staff only.
Nothing to disclose? Staff.
Staff.
This is a public hearing, so if there's members of the public, except for Mr. Knott? Sorry, Jimmy.
That's okay.
Senior of the Year, right?
That's right, and that's the reason I'm approaching the podium. I was asked, as being Senior Citizen of the Year, to represent the senior citizens of our city, especially those who are low-income or on fixed Social Security. Their increases that they receive, and I receive as well, basically do not cover all of the increases. Every time that there is an increase in Social Security, everybody increases their rates. And if you calculate it out, that increase puts a Social Security recipient behind the curve. We keep moving ahead, but our seniors get behind. We do not have any assistance program to help them. I have put in a request repeatedly, and there was supposed to be an investigation on this condition for our utility rates. This is part of our utilities. There is yet to be brought forward to the council any consideration for our senior citizens and those who are low-income. I would definitely ask that you consider this, because as you get older, you may end up as being one of those seniors who is on fixed, low-Social Security rate income. I don't know if you've ever met any of those seniors, but it really rips at your heart. I would take and appreciate that some form of study to take place, and we adjust or some way set up a fund or somehow help them.
Any other members of the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. I do recall that there was direction given to staff regarding the water rates, and not specifically this, which is actually separate and different, because we supply water, we don't actually, you know, we contract out for waste management. So, this is really separate. It is, as explained, it is 44 cents, right, difference. So, I'm going to go ahead and move approval of the request for the CPI adjustment, and that we adopt the resolution establishing the solid waste user rates and direct staff to implement the user rates and franchise provider charges. Thank you.
Councilmember Feller? Motion and a second. Seeing no other speakers, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Do we have any general council member comments?
Yes.
Councilmember Sanchez?
I did attend the Parks and Rec Commission meeting that we had last night. There was some discussion, some additional discussion regarding the, you know, getting the city to adopt, formally adopt, pest management control program. It's something that other cities have been doing. We don't actually have any policies at all. It would be, what we're looking at is basically a toxic-free program. So, the commissioners that have, that were, there was an ad hoc committee created to address this specifically. The commissioners that were on the ad hoc committee met also yesterday with staff. Staff has indicated to them that until there is direction to staff to look into the specifics of how we can go about doing that from the council, that they really are not going to be looking at that. So, I've spoken with Councilmember Keim, and we're going to be bringing an item to the next council meeting, I believe we still have. I think Monday is the deadline, is that correct? Yeah. So, basically, what we're looking at, when we talk about Parks and Rec Commission, we're talking about the parks, you know, and we have a lot of evidence that has been presented to the commission, that we are using a lot of pesticides still on a near-daily basis, and it's something that we really need to address. Cities of Carlsbad, other, I see Ms. Gorman here, other cities have been looking at this and have actually adopted a very progressive kind of program, and so, that's something that hopefully, we'll be able to come up with what other cities are doing and have done, and see how we can get this done by the city at a reasonable cost. And that's it, thank you.
Good, item 34, Mr. Mullen?
Thank you. Item 34 is the adoption of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside amending Article 30, Section 3018 of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance and establishing the amended text as part of the implementation plan for the local coastal program.
Move adoption.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion approved, 4-1. Sanchez, no.
And with that, we will adjourn to a workshop at 2:00 on Wednesday, April 17.